All right, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06. Good evening, this is a meeting of the Ferndale Public Schools Board of Education, held on Tuesday, February 24th, 2015. Our meeting is being video-recorded for broadcast on the district's YouTube channel, and on cable throughout the next month on a rotating schedule. All meetings in the Ferndale schools are held in public in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. Printed documents discussed in tonight's meeting are available to the public on request, with the exception of any information protected by student or employee privacy rights. Board meeting information is posted on our website at FerndaleSchools.org. If you do not have Internet access and need information, please contact the board office at (248) 586-8652. By Thursday of the week prior to the meeting, and district staff will do their best to work with you. Ms. Shepherd, may we have a roll call, please?
Sirs, brothers?
Here.
Herman Mueller?
Here.
Batash?
Here.
Etonine?
Here.
Toomey?
Here.
And Reverend O'Donnell?
Here. And trustee Kevin Deegan Kraus had scheduled some out-of-town travel, is actually leaving tonight before we had changed this meeting to tonight, so he sends his regrets, but is a good excuse, he's traveling for education. For his job. So let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, without objection, the agenda is approved. Next up, in our order of business, is a presentation by University High School leader Katie Jeffrey. Welcome, Ms. Jeffrey.
All right, so here's our five-minute insight, this is some of the cool stuff that we're doing this year at UHS. You know, we got to pick the focus of what we're sharing tonight, so what we're looking at is how we're doing some instruction beyond the classroom, but activities and new things we're doing at UHS that are still academic, content-related, but outside of school hours or in a different context than within the walls of the school. We have some different initiatives this year from different departments that are expanding those opportunities for extended-day learning for our kids that we really haven't had before. Also, some new partnerships for some new after-school groups. And then, now that we're in our full second year of our partnership with Wayne State University, which has been fantastic, pretty much, from the beginning, I just want to share a few of the immersion opportunities. I know Damian has shared some of them with you, but show you a few pieces of things to them. One of our new programs is Got Science. It's a quarterly after-school event that any UMS or UHS student can sign up for. In quarter two, they made candles, and they learned the science behind candle-making. On Thursday of this week, they're going to be making bread, and talking about yeast and things like that, I'm not sure. I mean, and then in quarter four, this is pretty exciting, they're doing a little fundraising for this one, they hope to make microscopes, microscopes, from smartphones. I have no idea how, but if you want to join in, the dates will be on the newsletter. For the kids there. Also, another new initiative is Geometry 101. We looked at our ACT scores last year, and our item analysis over the last few years, and what we know is that geometry, our students take it in 10th grade, most of our students, and then they test on it right in 11th grade. So we needed some geometry reviews, some just really going back over some of the things they had learned a year before. So all the month of, in February, the math team did a Geometry 101 review. It meets two times a week throughout February, and the math teachers, we have four math teachers, and they've alternated, so there's two math teachers at each one, and they do some specific geometry skills review online to the ACT, using the Chromebooks, so it's online, they're pretty engaged, we've had between 10 and 20 kids in each session, so it's been really good, because they're taking their ACT next week, so that's another cool new initiative. And this is my, one of my favorite decorated classrooms, we had a teacher move a room this year, she got to start fresh. You can see at the back here, it says Math Bridge, so she has a fridge for good math stuff, you know, and her room's pretty cool. Authors Inc., this is another new student-led group, we had a couple kids come forward to an English teacher this year and said, you know, we want to start a writing club at UHS. And so, they now meet bi-monthly, it's called, they came up with their name, Authors Inc. They share their original work, engage in discussion, they do some mini lessons, and they're actually going to be publishing a book that'll be online, but they're also going to get hard copies for themselves, so they're going to be published in a book. And then they've also, she's also brought in, this is Ms. Goodson, runs this group, some guest speakers, they had the former mayor of Pontiac, Dr. Payne, came in and spoke with them about his journey and his own writing, and then again, they're going to publish their own work. Oh, and one thing about this group, it's mostly boys, it's been really cool to see Some other new partnerships we have this year that I just wanted to fill you in on, the first is our C2 Pipeline tutoring and enrichment STEM program. It runs four days a week after school from 3:30 until about 5:30. They get dinner, then they have an hour of study hall with support, so there's, they're not teachers, but Wayne State students and Wayne State hires that come in and work with the study hall, and then there's a STEM enrichment hour that follows it. And this, this week, they're going to actually, they're teaming with the C2 Pipeline program at Oak Park, and they're going to be going to see someone, they have some field trips, they've gone to Wayne State University for some immersion events there. And then we have the Abiyami Community Center, this was a new partner for us this year as well, and they've started a girl talk program, because we know, you know, one of the things we deal with in high school all the time is girl drama, so we're trying to circumvent and get around those things by giving them a forum to talk. So there's a mentor that comes from Abiyami, and then one of our teachers at our school that runs the program as well, nurses UMS and UHS students, and they also do a book study and have different discussion topics each week. And here's some images of the C2 Pipeline program, some of the stuff that they're doing. One of our teachers, Soshia Haynes, just went over the break and was certified to be a STEM educator through the C2 Pipeline grant, so she's going to be bringing back a lot of really cool activities for the year. And then finally, just our Wayne State immersion program, again, in our Wayne State program, all of our seniors attend classes on the Wayne State campus four days a week to get the experience, and they are with UHS teachers at that time, but then two to three times a month, they do a number of immersion activities to learn about what college is actually like, and to help them navigate the college experience when they leave us in May, which is really, really soon. So some of those immersion activities have been a campus tour and a student success scavenger hunt, where they actually had to go and like find an academic advisor, and go to the research library, find the right in the center of campus, things like that. They did, actually, Mr. Inkland's here tonight, they did a lecture audit of History 1000, a Halloween audit, so they got a lot campy, actually, and a pretty cool Halloween lectures, one of the most famous live lectures on the WSTU campus. They work with College of Education mentors, they did a wagon activity, getting to know some college students, and ask, getting to ask them questions one-on-one. They went to the WSTU main library, had scavenger hunt, and the Jeopardy review about how to use resources like MOW, and learn about the Writing Center, and lots of other things, right? They visited the College of Engineering last month and did a tour, they got to listen to student engineers and talk about what that major actually means. They had a financial aid night and scholarship presentation, too, with Wayne State faculty. They're going to have, again, in the starting class, it's very helpful, travel abroad presentation on March 24th, where students are going to come and talk some about travel abroad opportunities at college. And then, we also have WSTU student panels and discussions where the kids can ask the WSTU students across many grade levels in college, what, anything they really wanted, they were fantastic. Just a few pictures, and this, I'm very excited about, this was our financial aid night this year for our parents, we had put out about 50 chairs, we have 90 seniors, we ended up with about 110 chairs we had to bring out. That was cool, it was the most well-attended parent presentation I think we've ever had at our school, beyond the showcase where the students are actually presenting something, those are always really big. And I just want to give a shout-out to our school improvement parent, Mr. Ben Menuti, because he's been working with so many of the local businesses in Ferndale to solicit handouts and goodies that we can give away in raffles when parents come in and attend. So it's been a really awesome experience, and what we've gotten from our community partners this year has been amazing. That's pretty much it for us, you know, this is our 10th year, so we're really looking at what our next 10 years would be like, and one of the things, you know, I think, having been at UHS from the beginning, we've always had a great history of strong instruction and great teachers and great students, but our students walk north, they're looking for more experiences and more options, and this year, I think we really had those opportunities that are starting to come forward, and just a lot of our incredible teachers who are giving a lot of their time after school to help run these different programs and be a part of the performance, that's been, we're always thankful for our teachers. That's it.
All right.
Just a quick aside, that when you look at the data on UHS, they're one of the only schools in the tri-county area that's beating the odds. One of the top schools in the tri-county is Mott Community, Mott Early College, and UHS is just a hair beneath them. So they have done phenomenal work with the students, and be able to really help every student achieve and get them college-ready, so it is a great program that we offer to our students here.
It is, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Jeffrey. Next, we'll move to hearing information from our student representatives, first, Faith Huddleston from Ferndale High School. Welcome.
So, it seems that there is more news than I expected, and I was writing it down, so I guess I'll start with the ACT exams, which are next week, which is March 3rd and 4th. Juniors have been preparing all year, and they even got practicing last year, so they seem to be well-prepared for the ACT this year. There would be one last final ACT prep camp this Saturday, just February 28th, from 8:00 in the morning to 10:15. And speaking of this Friday, Ferndale High School, and I think a lot of other schools, have an open house. I'm in orchestra, so we're going to be doing like a little, we're going to be basically practicing for festival, so if you want to stop by the orchestra room, see us practice, it'd be greatly appreciated. Dani Collins, who is a senior at Ferndale High School, qualified for the state championship meet at regionals today. Also, the United Student Association, USA, will host the annual blood drive tomorrow, and it goes from 8:00 AM through 2:00 PM. And also, the robotics team would be having two competitions coming up, and one of them seems to be standard competition, not into robotics, I don't really know what that means, but I mean, I guess it's pretty cool for them, which is Friday, this Friday, the 27th, and they have a competition, Waterford, and that would be Friday, March 6th. And it seems to be it.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, thank you. And next, we turn to Damian Thomas from UHS.
Good evening. Ms. Jeffrey, she really covered a lot of information that I was going to say, so, okay, I'll just piggyback and add on. Actually, I want to start with our athletics. Our basketball season has really been going great for both the boys' teams and the girls' team. Tonight, actually, we had a senior night game, but it wound up getting canceled, but it was, it's kind of funny, because it got canceled at the last minute, and the gym was just full of people waiting for the other team, so we really showed support, and we really stand by, like, our basketball teams, because we believe in them. The varsity boys are 11 and 4, and the boys JV are 10 and 3. Not really sure of the girls' record, but I think they're 9 and 3, that sounds about right. And ACT, that's next week, I know the juniors are kind of dreading it, and they're kind of scared, but I know they're really prepared, they've been having ACT camps, and their CPC classes are really dedicated towards just ACT, so I know this week, this whole entire week, and Monday, if we do have school on Monday, they're going to be working hard in CPC. And we actually have DECA States in two weeks. UHS is competing in DECA States this year, once again, and it's really fun getting ready for that. I'm personally participating in DECA States, and I know that my marketing teacher, Ms. Watkins, she's really pushing us to do our best, and she's really wants, she really wants us to work hard and make sure that we can qualify for Nationals. And DECA States is going to be in Grand Rapids this year, so we're taking a trip. And we had a financial aid night at UHS, where we were actually able to fill out our FAFSA with the help of the Wayne State representative who gave the presentation at Wayne State. Her name was Ms. Daisy Cordaro, I remember her, she was really nice, and she helped us really understand what the FAFSA was asking, or what this certain sentence meant, and what you could put here, what you couldn't put there, she really helped us a lot, and I think we're all going to be getting money for our FAFSA. And the seniors, we returned to Wayne State this week, I think we're all pretty glad about that, we like it at Wayne State. Ms. Jeffrey talked about the tour of the College of Engineering, I thought that was pretty cool, because they were able to show us some of the things that they actually built, and he gave a really good presentation on the, it's like a big College of Engineering, and then little different sections of College of Engineering, and I didn't know that, I thought, you just build buildings and keep it moving, but that was a really interesting presentation, and we also did have the presentation for the financial aid night with Ms. Daisy Cordell, that was really helpful, because students got to ask questions, and I didn't really know, like, my peers didn't really know anything about the FAFSA, so I know walking in, everybody was really scared and confused, but when we all walked out, we were able to go home and tell our parents, okay, Mom, Dad, you got to do this, and you got to do that, and then we're okay. And student council, we just recently had a visit from Mr. Blake Pruitt, he came, and he, yeah, you came, remember?
I did?
Okay. Yeah, he talked to us, and he asked our opinions on what we wanted to see differently in our school, and different events that we were going to have, and he basically came in and got our opinion, which was really nice, because we felt included, it was really nice. I think all the students there really appreciated that, and Mr. Gardner, so.
I have a quick question for you, did you get the microwave?
I don't know yet, but...
Did Mr. Beatty pick it up?
I don't believe so.
I'll be back tomorrow.
Okay, or after tonight.
We really need that microwave.
I understand.
It's hard, a 30-minute lunch and one microwave, and like 60 kids, that's too much, but that's it.
But problem solved, right?
Yes. That's it.
All right, thank you, any questions?
Can you pass along a message to Ms. Watkins, are you doing any fundraisers for your DECA trip?
Yes, we actually have a couple of fundraisers, Otis Spunkmeyer, the cookies that they have, we sold those, we sold those last semester, and that did really well, and Pizza Kids, we're doing those right now.
Okay, so be sure and pass the word that the school board are always, you know, in for those fundraisers.
You want some Pizza Kids?
I could go for either one of those, but, you know, I know that that's, you know, that's always something that kids are doing, is raising money for trips, so.
Right. Ms. Jeffrey, Mr. Beatty, Mr. Alfred Alfred, all know where, all know how to get ahold of us when we need to be hit up for those student fundraisers, so.
Gym's looking a little thin.
Right, I could button my coat today, so, that means I need to eat some more pizza.
Well, those Pizza Kids can get the job done, so. Come to the right place.
Awesome.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to the time for public comment, this is the time for public participation in our meeting today. The board intends for the public to have many opportunities to address us and the administration, including by email, phone calls, face-to-face meetings, community gatherings, public hearings, and in many other ways. We welcome individual and group input into the important issues that confront our schools. Now, as noted at the top of the agenda, if you picked one up, this is a meeting of the school board that's open to the public. We want to provide fair and impartial guidelines for participation as required by the Open Meetings Act, and to encourage transparency and equal treatment for everyone in attendance. We also recognize that having an effective meeting facilitates better decisions and promotes openness by allowing more people to stay for the full length of the meeting. So we just have a few guidelines for participation. We do ask that you identify yourself and list contact information on a comment sheet. If you don't wish to do so in writing, then please identify yourself up at the podium, and if you need a response, please provide contact information to an administrator after, at least before the, before the meeting ends, or immediately after. Generally, I call on the people who've completed comment sheets first, since we don't have any of those, just line up at the podium, and when there's no more line at the podium, that's the signal to me that public comment will come to a conclusion. Everybody has one opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes. Comments and questions should be directed to the board president, myself. We just need a volunteer to keep track of time, and Ms. Karen Toomey is always willing to do that, so she, or I, will hold up our hands when it's time to wrap up, and will give you time to finish your sentence. Public comments end at the conclusion of this part of the agenda, however, in the event that the number of people wishing to comment takes longer than 30 minutes, we will just end after 30 minutes, or post, stop after 30 minutes, and then add time at the end of the meeting, so that everyone who wishes to address the board gets a chance to speak. Complaints about staff should be made outside of the meetings, we have a board policy on complaints, so please follow that, we can't respond to complaints about employees in public, so this helps promote fairness for both the complainant and the staff person. And finally, we just ask you to uphold our longstanding tradition of civility during public comment. So, I see we have our first person wishing to comment.
Michelle Sebula.
Who needs no introduction.
No, the reputation precedes me. Michelle Sebula, Ferndale Career Center, Michigan Works, also alum of the Ferndale High School class of 1979, and we are here this evening, Ms. Kirsten Haupt Stanley and I, we, in October, had our 35th class reunion, not sure how that happened, but it happened. We had a lovely time, we're about 150 folks able to make it back for the reunion, with a graduating class of 400 and some, I don't have an exact number, but we decided when we were in the planning stages, that we wanted to do something to give back to our schools that we all felt so sentimental and strongly about, that had gotten us off to such a great start in life. So we had a silent auction at our reunion, and tonight, we would like to present you with a check for $1,000 from our silent auction to give back to the school district, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all, I don't think I used all my three minutes, so somebody will see.
Wait, 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 stand back up there, we got a picture of you being generous. Where's the other? Gosh, is this a bad picture?
Kirsten, will you stand up?
Mr. Good is not here tonight, so we'll get him this picture.
Do you have the check, the actual check, hold it up?
Did you tell her to say that? I want a giant check, that's what I want. We were going to bring one of those big ones. Thank you, thanks guys.
And we'll make sure that money goes directly back to the high school, for them to use.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, my name is Jesse Inkland, I'm the secretary of the Ferndale Education Association, but I'm standing here, speaking to you as a proud resident, taxpayer, and voter here in the city of Ferndale. I would appreciate, I got here a little late, so I was not able to get the request, but I have my information on it. I would like to have forwarded to me any evidence you have linked to savings that could happen to the, for the district, if they look at privatizing certain services that are in the district. I have come across studies, Ferndale, sometimes it's good to be the last to do something, and there are studies that show that privatization does not tend to yield the savings that have been attributed, which cause districts to turn to it in the first, in the first place. So if you could submit to me the evidence that you have showing that there's savings from that, I would appreciate it. Actually, the main reason I'm here is to speak about two people who mean a lot to me. You've heard the book, It Takes a Village, and I want to talk to you about two of my villagers. One's name is Art Lozinski, he works inside University High School. If I ever go to a deserted island, if I've ever voted onto a deserted island, I want to take Art with me, because I know I'll survive, because I don't think there's anything the man can't do. I first met Art a few years ago, he was on his hands and knees, I walked in the building during the summer, and he was scraping the residue off the boards on the floor of the building, going around, if you don't think schools are very big, get on your hands and knees and crawl up and down the hallways, and that's what he was doing, muttering all the time about this damn wax buildup, he sounded like a commercial, but that's the kind of guy Art is, he does everything to the best. The other person I want to talk about is Carolyn Leonard, she works with Art in the building. Carolyn is a machine, she's so methodical, I thank her, I can't thank her enough, I thank her every day, but still not enough, because she leaves my room ready for the next day of instruction. I hope you'll consider them and the efforts and what they've dedicated to this district, they are just two of many in this district, It Takes a Village. Lastly, I just want to talk about, I just saw, I was home long enough to wolf down dinner and look at ABC News, and they were talking about a teacher, I didn't even catch where, who was donating a kidney to her student. Teachers will give anything to their students, we hope you guys will support us in that. Thank you.
All right. So just for the information request, and Mr. Shelton, Mr. Pruitt can add some more details, but I believe our RFP responses are due on the 9th, and that's the 9th of March, which is a public bid opening, and then the analysis will follow after that and be ready for distribution in mid-April. So, leave it to the two of you to work out, that's, mid-April is the time that we would have concrete information about savings.
That's correct, the goal is to get some kind of recommendation to board for the April 24th.
Okay, so having received that request, just...
And we do have the report that we received from CCS, it's in the last board packet, but I can directly email it.
Okay.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, my name is Boris Tullisford, I'm the president of the Ferndale Education Association, and I have three comments, concerns this evening, and I'll start with the best one first. I want to applaud publicly the staff at the Digital Learning Center, we know they had a tumultuous year... We know they had a tumultuous year this year. We know they had to switch buildings December 1st and drastically changed the nature of their program and how much they were able to contact with students. And yesterday, when I met with Tom Shelton, he let me know that they still made count above 300 students. And I want you all to realize that's five staff members who are working their tails off every day with probably the least resources of all the staff in the district, perhaps the least instructional support of all the staff in the district, and supporting 300 students. So I'm not sure if the board is very familiar with the staff, but I've met a lot of them now that I've been president, and they're phenomenal. And I think they do a great job at what they're asked to do, given the tools that they have. And I want us to keep that in mind as we think about next year and as we think about what we want our alternative education program to look like. I want the board to ask the question, what about those five staff members who for three years have been busting their tails to generate a tremendous amount of revenue for our district without very much resources? So I hope that as we look to grab alliance or other solutions, we don't lose sight of the people, the staff that have served our district in an awesome way this year in a time of difficulty, but also in the past. The second big concern that members have brought up has to do with the decision-making process that the board is using and not necessarily understanding where to go to get information. Under Gary Meyer, there were a variety of different committees. FEA held seats on those committees. We couldn't vote, but we knew where to go to share our opinion and to participate in the conversations. And I feel like that is being lost, or we aren't clear how to participate and how to share our perspective and our voice. So what that's leading to is members who feel like our voice isn't being considered or decisions are just being made behind closed doors and then public, being made known public later. So I'd like to encourage the board to maybe publish a communication that helps us see where the information was last year and how that information is being presented this year. In many instances, I hear rumors of something being true as president, and I say, no, that can't be true. No one has told me about that. We haven't been invited to comment on that. And then three months later, it turns out that that was true. So things like that are a little unsettling. It seems like the board generally votes 7-0, and we don't know where the discussion and the intense debate took place. I had a board meeting today, and, you know, we were pretty split in terms of how we felt about it. So we'd just like to know where those arguments are happening so we can, you know, hold you accountable and hear what you think. That's point two. Hopefully, I'm not over time yet. The last point is, as we make sure that we value every penny in our district, some teachers are feeling like every time we ask for some concession from the district, the answer is no, because we can't afford it, even when maybe the right thing to do is suspend the extra money. So just the question of when do we spend a little bit more money to make a difference for teachers and our students? The fear being if the district always says no, we can't afford to do anything more, teachers might say, well, I can't afford to do any extra with their time. And I don't want us to go there, so we'd like to see a little more maybe wiggle from the district. Thank you.
Before you step away, to the last point first. I think it's important, you know, that you continue to talk to Mr. Shelton and Mr. Pruitt about the financial considerations because that's, you know, I think that's the appropriate venue for budget considerations and anything, any possible negotiation around that extra support. On the, and then on the board decision-making, I just want to reiterate that we have study sessions that are posted, generally the second Monday of the month. Although next month, we're using a community forum on the usual date for the study session. So we've moved the study session to March 12th. And that's where we hear more detail from the administration, a lot of the work that was being done in committee. And I just want everyone to know that one of the reasons we changed the committee structure is because once we had new administration in, we found a number of things weren't going to the committees or weren't being really deliberated at all. And the committees were involved in work that was not board-level decision-making at all. For instance, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the work that the former operations committee was working on never resulted in deliberations about, say, one of the findings in the audit being, you know, lack of documentation presented to the board. That wasn't presented at committee and it wasn't presented to the board, and that was under our old committee structure. So in order to keep everybody involved, we've moved to this study session model so that we don't, so that all seven of us and everybody in the public is, knows when we're meeting and when we're hearing about the issues that would have been in committee. But we'll be happy to publish, you know, more information. And this is also a model that's in flux because we have a new administrative team. And until all seven of us are comfortable with a lot of this information, especially on restructuring and the budget changes, we need to meet as a group. And the only way to do that is to meet as a, as a full body instead of in committee.
And I certainly was not intending to critique the new model just to convey that many members are not sure where to go to access that information. So some communication, in case they don't watch this on YouTube or misunderstood things you've said, some communication might be beneficial. And then to the earlier point, I agree that we, Tom and I and Blake and I, we talk a lot about minute financial details. But I do want the board to be aware of the general sense of the teachers and how they're, you know, feeling like they're being asked to do more and more and more and volunteer a lot of time, but not always feeling like the other side is being willing to do a little bit more. So, if that's clear.
First, I want to thank Mr. Telsford and the union for the work they have been doing. It's been a very productive relationship that we've had. And just to remind the board that on the last budget amendment, the board did vote to spend $160,000 out of fund equity, so we did not have to do layoffs mid-year. Unlike, per se, Rochester, that decided to lay off teachers mid-year, so they didn't eat anything into fund equity. So we have started to establish that in terms of, you know, not, of dipping somewhat into the fund equity when we need to and it's the right thing for our staff members and our people. And part of the different presentations on restructuring is to make sure that we are financially healthy moving forward so we can continue to be able to give our teachers what they need, not only in the classroom, but appropriate salary in those different pieces. So that's been part of the overall restructuring. So our hope is financially that we can be in a place where we can continue to be able to give, to do the right things in the classroom. And there is a, I do have a meeting with all the DLC staff on Thursday to talk about, first, to thank them for all the good work they've done. And second, to look at what do they see moving forward as, as the next generation of this to address the issues that they very much see just as we see, so that we can try and move forward as a team.
And I just want to super quickly piggyback on some of the things that President O'Donnell was saying. I think that, to your point, there was so much being asked of a lot of our staff members. And so what we were seeing is that a lot of staff members were coming to these really long meetings that quite frankly were not effective in accountability that we were hoping they would bring, in the transparency. So when you say that you're not critiquing it, I think that it is in flux and we are open to critiques as we move forward.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I speak to you tonight not as an employee of the district, but as a chaperone of a wonderful group of students who I was able to accompany to California last week over mid-winter break. A group of students from Ferndale High School, Berkeley High School, and the International Academy flew out at 6:30 in the morning Friday the 13th. There were a few people nervous about that, by the way. Spent three days in San Francisco, a day in Monterey, and four days in Los Angeles before returning home on a red-eye, 11:45 Friday night, getting home at 8 o'clock Saturday morning. So, but it was a wonderful trip. The kids all had a great time. Allison Mace, who I know pretty well, organized the trip with Adina Rubenstein from Berkeley High School. For those of you that don't know, Adina cut her teeth at Ferndale High School. She actually interned for John Bader and taught a few years in the district. So Allison and Adina have stayed pretty close. So this was trip one. It was a STEM-focused trip. Visited UCal Berkeley, University of Southern California, and Caltech while we were out there, as well as two science museums and various nature exhibits along the way. The intention for Allison and Adina is to make this an annual trip with different destinations. Next year, they will be going to the East Coast. The year after, the destination is Europe. No, yeah, Europe. And then the fourth year will be Florida. And then they'll start back over in California and go through the process again. I know I'm close to up on time, but if the board will allow, I'd like to show you a summary of one of the days in California.
Yeah, absolutely. Is there snow in the picture, Tom?
So this is where all of our bottles and cans went.
The live auction was live, like.
Oh, wow. How'd it taste?
You ever been to California and visited a restaurant called Lemonade? Did not get the unsweet lemonade.
All right, great. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name is Debbie Hillebrand, and I am music teacher at Roosevelt Primary and now at John F. Kennedy School. And in other districts that I used to work in, we used to offer the boards some entertainment once in a while. So I just thought I'd put it out there. We don't have to do it this year, but it's really fun sometimes. And I know that it gets on, you know, the cable television and everything, and it's really cool to bring kids to come and show what they're learning in music. And there's a lot going on at both schools. And this has been my first year to work in both buildings here. And I, if you can imagine, I have every single kindergartner in the whole district, and I have every single first grader, and they're all just a bunch of fun. And, but they really can learn a lot, and so it's really fun to bring kids in. So if you ever want some entertainment, please let me know. And the other thing I wanted to say is I always would make sure that my board members, I worked in Brighton Public Schools, I worked in River Rouge, I worked in a lot of different places in the state. And I drove a lot of places too, because I haven't moved anywhere. I live outside of Ann Arbor, so it's a haul. But I, we always wanted to invite personally the board members to come to concerts. So we have a few upcoming things, and we are one of the most noted school districts for music education in the state and actually in the country, so get that one. And so on March 11th, coming up, we have a first grade big performance at John F. Kennedy School. And then I have at Roosevelt Primary on March 26th, which is a Thursday. I have my second graders performing. And in April, on the 29th, I have my third graders. And not all those dates went into the calendar because there was like a little miscommunication. So Mr. Good is putting them in, or Robin's putting them in. So that's what's coming up. So I just wanted to let you know and invite you personally. Come on and see.
The 3rd, the April 29th one, was that one at Roosevelt or at Coolidge?
Yes, third grade.
Or I mean, Kennedy.
Yeah, I only teach kindergarten and first grade at Kennedy.
Okay, all right.
So, and at Roosevelt.
Sorry, missed that bit.
And I sent you that personal email, so you better be there.
I don't think you're going to get a big, I think we probably have a few board members here that would be really excited to.
Can I make a special request?
Oh, my gosh, she loves singing.
Will you bring your auto harp?
Sure. I actually, do you know how long it takes to tune an auto harp? In case you were wondering, with the little kids, I count every single string, and we do accounting exercise. We do math and music. We do all kinds of things. There are 36 strings. So it takes quite a time, so I'll make sure it's tuned properly.
But we would, yeah, we would love to have the kids here and just coordinate it with the superintendent.
Some schools I've actually gone to, the Michigan Department of Ed, I was working in a charter school. But we went and presented at MDE too, so.
Yeah, we would love to see the kids at the beginning of our meeting. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no other, nobody else at the podium, we will close public comment and move to our consent agenda. We have several items on our consent agenda. Just one clarification, Mr. Shelton, we don't have new hires to approve this month, right? So 5.1 is a request to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 26th. 5.2, request to approve the minutes of the special meeting on February 9th. 5.3 is a request to approve a policy and the second reading of that policy, 6320.02. 5.4 is a request to approve Head Start, the Head Start report and policies as submitted. 5.5 is a request to approve bills and accounts for the month of January. 5.6 is a request to approve resignations, as noted in the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources report. So does any board member wish to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 5.1 through 5.6, as presented. Moved by Ms. Kermula and seconded by Ms. Toomey. Maybe we have a roll call, please?
Letters?
Yes.
Kermula?
Yes.
The patch?
Yes.
This side?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
Yes. So it's six yes and zero no. The motion passes and the consent agenda items are approved. We have a brief action agenda tonight, and that is a request to approve the seventh grade business curriculum. Ms. Rochev?
Good evening, board members and community. I am very excited to share with you our seventh grade social studies curriculum proposal. As part of our strategic plan, it calls for more creative and innovative practices that enrich learning opportunities for all of our students, help retain.
So I just want to end by saying, when you look at the written curriculum and that on the proposal form that you received at the study session, you can see that this is true student-led opportunities with teacher facilitation. It's true project-based learning that allows our students to accelerate at their own pace and that the student, it's a definition of student-centered and a learning-focused class curriculum. Charlotte and Tom?
I will actually let Charlotte and Dawn talk. I'm going to try and get Scott Jeffrey on a Google Hangout because he was instrumental in the process, but he and Kay didn't both be here tonight, so I'm actually hoping that he has child number one in bed in between number one and two, so.
This could be our first virtual meeting.
I know, this is kind of exciting. I feel how we're all modern.
Welcome.
Hi. They are ready for some questions.
We are.
We are.
All right.
I mean, we are.
Do we have Scott?
We are, we are waiting for Scott, but you can go ahead and start.
We can go ahead and do questions right now?
Sure, if you have any questions.
Okay, great. So this is gonna be in, I'm sorry, I have a question, so.
Yeah, go ahead. Jump in.
Take it over. I get really excited about CTE classes because that's the area that I worked in. So this is gonna be in the social studies. Which teachers are gonna be doing this at which buildings? Is it gonna be across all the social study classes, or is it gonna just be in specifics?
It's just Scott Jeffrey and his seventh grade classes. In the past, when we were on trimesters, we were gonna be moving to semesters next year, but we, the student, the seventh grade students only had to have the social studies class two of the three trimesters. And so Scott always had an opportunity for an extracurricular class, and he would teach geography, which is fine.
Right.
But as we start talking about ways to get kids more involved in CTE, we came up with the Shark Tank program, and actually it was kind of a brainchild of Blake, and, you know, we were kind of talking, talking about it. And Scott is very involved in the Google scene, I guess you could say, environment, and he just latched right onto it. And he also is a huge proponent of project-based learning, and he's been doing that a lot through his classes. And so this was just a natural merging, and then we asked Charlotte to come on board, and so now we're really excited about, you know, the possibility or the class that's coming up. So what he's gonna do is when we move to semesters, we'll be on quarters, and so there'll be three quarters of the class, and then one quarter will be the Shark Tank project.
That, I, I'm really excited about this, and I, I really like both Charlotte and Scott, so I think it's bound to be successful.
Yeah, I would concur in that, and I know they've all made learning engaging for the kids that I have personal experience, which are my own, so it's exciting just to.
I know Connor's gonna be actually bummed out that he missed out on the Shark Tank experience. When I was hearing about this, I was like, he would have loved this, but I'm very excited that the upcoming kids will be having an opportunity.
Well, have them come see me because I incorporate Shark Tank in every unit that I teach in my Global Business Management 1 and 2, and I have units that I've created and worksheets I've created for, to emphasize whatever component we're, we're working on.
What, what classes are those called?
So the high school kids love Shark Tank.
Say it one more time into the.
Oh, Global Business Management 1 and 2.
Okay.
May as well get a promo for your class.
Yeah, of course. I'm trying to blur wherever I can. Did you hear that global?
I wrote it down.
Offer to what grades and, you know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, Connor will be in high school next year, so.
Yeah, they love it.
You have a question?
And so this is not something that kids and parents are gonna need to be aware of when they are choosing classes in seventh grade. This is something that just comes automatically. When you take social studies, you will get this.
Yes.
All seventh graders.
In seventh grade. And so will it, will it be, will different sections be doing it at different times throughout the year, or is it, are they all doing it the same 10 weeks, 10-week time period?
The thought process is to do it the last quarter, as the kids are kind of winding down, the weather's getting warmer, and they need something to keep them super extra engaged. The thought process, though, is that Scott might do, Scott and Charlotte might do one, either second quarter or third quarter, just to kind of get their feet dirty and, you know, hands dirty, feet dirty, and pilot it a little bit.
Suit works.
And then tweak it where needed, and then roll out the rest of it at the end of the school year.
And is it too early to ask which local businesses we've invited to?
It's too early.
Okay.
But we, we would love any ideas you have. I mean, obviously, you know.
I mean, there's, yeah.
You're all connected and we, you know.
And it's, it is, that's one of my favorite parts about this, is this, that collaboration with, with the community and the potential for the school district to show their appreciation to the community and vice versa, and have this be a little bit of a way for the community to get a taste of what we do in Ferndale Schools. And so, and, and I think, you know, whoever it ends up being, I think it's important to get the word out about those, those businesses that help us, you know, so that we can, you know.
Yeah.
Get that recognition out there, yeah.
Right. And Amy and Raylan, just from your work on Ferndale Education Foundation, you, you probably have businesses right at the top of your mind that have been supportive of the foundation, and, you know, my favorite silent auction bid item is always Treat Dreams, so.
Oh, it's just things.
I'm sure, I'm sure this is right up Scott Maloney's alley.
Oh, yeah, see, yeah, he would be a perfect fit, I would think.
I have to borrow your daughter so I can go there.
Oh, yeah. Raylan, you got a question?
I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the program, the opportunity that these kids are gonna have to learn, things that, well, I still need to learn in high school, like spreadsheets and things like that, it's gonna be really exciting. And just putting in FYI, I have a seventh grader, well, a sixth grader who will be in seventh grade, and he'll have the opportunity to benefit from this program, so thank you.
And the hope is to, to use the Google apps that we'll have, so, I mean, it just makes it so much easier for the collaboration piece, because they can, you know, work in teams, and we're working on, on how we will assign, you know, whether they'll be doing it, you know, individually, if they wanna work on a project, we're gonna do some self-assessment pieces in the beginning, so they kind of get a feel of, you know, what are they good at, what do they like, what is their self-interest, some of those kinds of things. They'll get, you know, be able to explore some of the products that have been successful in Shark Tank, those that have not. So, you know, we, we really have kind of thought through as far as we can so far, and we'll continue to do that, since we won't actually be running it in the very beginning of the school year, and we still have some time to develop the course.
I have another question, actually, totally off-topic, but because you're here. Do you got, do we have a date for Reality Store?
April 2nd. Thursday before Good Friday.
I know that you said that before, but it's always good to.
Yeah, and I, actually, it's sort of keeps coming back on the top of the to-do list. Content and volunteers, so.
And you still need volunteers.
We do, yes.
It's an amazing event to volunteer at. If anybody's looking for a chance to see the high school in action, I highly recommend volunteering at this one.
Yeah, it's like a game of life, but a real-life version of it, and the students, all the juniors participate at Ferndale High School, and we're always looking for people who are willing to come in and, and work hard or all if you can, and we feed you.
And my senior was ju, we ju, Reality Store came up at the dinner table yesterday, so.
Good.
Since he's gonna have to be applying some of those lessons and.
Favorable, favorable conversation.
Yes, about Reality Store. About Reality Store, yes, about Reality.
So I've had seniors, I know, I've had seniors come to me already and asking if they can do it again, and that happens every year, so.
Oh, that's good.
So if there are no more questions about this piece, I just want to, Scott's, I'm sure, probably putting the kids a bit above his time, so you guys who are parents, you do understand.
Yes.
But I do want to give a shout-out to the Curriculum Instruction Department. I think that you're gonna find a lot of innovative programming coming across your desk during the remainder of the school year, as we are finding new ways to reach the kids and to really engage them in learning, and it's been phenomenal working with the Curriculum Instruction team, because they've been able to get us all together, all at the table. We haven't always had that chance. We've had great ideas, but we haven't always had an opportunity to flesh through those ideas and work together, and so now we have that, and that's extremely exciting, as we bring people together vertically, and we're looking at elementary teachers, working with middle teachers, working with high school teachers, and all working together to develop these great programs. So I'm just really excited about the, the future of the district as far as engagement for our students. You know, we do have to do more with, well, maybe not even that, I think we have to learn how to work smarter, and I think we're working smarter, and that's very encouraging.
Scott, thank you.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I see that. Yes.
Ms. Warren, one last question. I know that this is up for a vote tonight, so maybe, maybe it didn't come up, but I'm just wondering if you were able to whisper in some of the parents' ears last night at the middle school meeting that took place, you know, was that something that you were able to mention to them, that this is coming down the pike or?
The Shark Tank piece, briefly, yes. Yes, we did.
So, and, and the more we can talk about it to the incoming parents, the better, so.
Yes, and we had a fabulous turnout, by the way, about 60 parents last night.
Yeah, that's.
On a cold day.
Right, yeah. I wasn't even in school, so.
So I'm really glad we, you know, kept the meeting, and a lot of positive feedback, so.
Yeah, I've heard the same, so, well done on that.
Right. Speaking of that, Ms. Warren, is there, there's another meeting that's coming up regarding that?
Oh, we're gonna have a lot more meetings. We'll probably have at least three more before the end of the school year.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much. So we'll have Mr. Jeffrey at a, an upcoming meeting, or Google Hangout. So I will entertain a motion to approve the seventh grade curriculum as presented, moved by Ms. Weeks-May and seconded by Ms. Kerr Mueller. Any discussion on the motion?
I think it's a good, I think it sounds great, and I think one of the things that parents often express a need for is some more real-world, you know, practical sorts of skills, and this is, this is, this is gonna include a lot of those, you know, things that parents even don't feel comfortable teaching anymore, you know, some of this technology is, is even more advanced than what parents are, you know, really up to date on, so I'm excited.
Me, too. All right, roll call, please.
Letters?
Yes.
Kerr Mueller?
Yes.
The patch?
Yes.
This side?
Yes.
Toomey?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. With six yes and zero no, the motion passes and the curriculum is approved. Thank you.
So I will send an email to the board asking for any suggestions for businesses to contact, because I would like to start contacting the businesses ahead of schedule. Try and get that out to you this week.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to the superintendent's report, item 7.1.
Yes, just wanted to give the board a little bit of update of some of the information that we've been gathering in, in our different meetings, as well as some of the information we've been working on with Ahmed Beasley from Plant Moran. We've had two great meetings of PTAs, one at JFK and one at Roosevelt Coolidge. Had really good attendance at both meetings, great group of parents at both meetings, you know, really advocating for, for their kids and what they wanna see in, in Ferndale moving forward. Some, if you, if you look at some of the data, and this is only partial, you know, the rest of it is up online on the reconfiguration, with our JFK community, some of the things that I wanted to hit on with, you know, with the open program, is that they really listed out the pieces of the open program on their document, where they talked about it, especially the project-based learning, the outdoor education habits in the mind, and the five pillars of open, the parent volunteerism, of, you know, the pieces of the program that were very important to, to many of the people there. Within Roosevelt and Coolidge, we see a lot in terms of, you know, there being a certain sense of equity across the district. We see foreign language and world language within, within both, and that's something that we've heard in every community forum, that that's something that the community misses having. Obviously, that was a budgetary cut at the time, so that'd be something we, in any of the models, we would have to work out budgetarily. And many things about, about academics, many of the things that we see within our strategic plan, but was just very happy with the, the communities and the parent support and the people that were there. A lot of good information for us to consider as, as we move forward. So we also met with all the elementary teachers. We had all three groups together. We didn't have a lot of time, so there wasn't a ton of processing to be done, but they came up with a rather exhaustive list of different things that the teachers wanted to see as we move forward with this, this reconfiguration in, you know, just a bunch of various areas. We did ask for teacher volunteers to help work to develop the models, to get from a teacher perspective, how would we implement these models, what would it look like in the classroom, what do they think is, is realistic, because sometimes from a central office perspective or administrative perspective, you don't see what it's like for the teacher, and we know that's the teacher that matters within the classroom. So we do have a group that's actually presenting tomorrow. They'll be presenting at the superintendent's forum at 9:00 here at Harding and 7:00 at the high school, kind of going more in detail on those three models, in time for questions and answers, both of, of the administrative team and the teachers, so we can try and flesh some of this out better. As I've been telling everyone as we go through this, this is a process. Every time we have a meeting, every time we listen, every time we gather information, things change, we move forward of, with that information. So even from the first time that we've started presenting on January 27th till tomorrow, a lot of information is different, a lot of the presentation's different. It's, all information is good, there's just a lot of it out there, because we have a very passionate community about their education, which is what we want. So we started doing a little more in-depth, and actually should have the Plant Moran study of all the buildings here shortly, but we started looking more in-depth of what our buildings can actually hold, especially if we have a band room, a music room, an art room, space for special education, because initial reports will just give you just classrooms. Well, if you just do classrooms, that means arts on a cart, music's on a cart, and I know that's not what the community wants to see. Community wants to see, you know, the appropriate spaces. So we, we have been through every building to identify spaces, you know, some, some, each building has different spaces. We looked at not only our, our current enrollment, with, we have seven sections seems to be our top number of sections, so we'd wanna plan for whatever configuration that we would have room for seven sections of students, so that we didn't get to a spot where we wouldn't have classroom space. So, in our current numbers, I have in, in the packet, the class sizes, the average between both buildings and the overall building and district average. There's some discrepancies, you know, but it's grade level by grade level, there's always discrepancies. The piece I found very interesting is I found an article in December where there was an issue at, at a Royal Oak Board meeting regarding class size, and this is some information that CNG Newspaper put together based upon the different districts, and it's just second grade, that's all, the only stat that they have, so it's the only stat I could go with in terms of. Every time we have a meeting, every time we listen, every time we gather information, things change. We move forward of, with that information. So even from the first time that we've started presenting on January twenty-seventh till tomorrow, um, a lot of information is different, a lot of the presentation's different. Uh, it's, all information is good. Um, there's just a lot of it out there because we have a very passionate community about their education, which is what we want. So we started doing a little more in-depth, and actually, should have the Plant Moran study of all the buildings here shortly. Uh, but we started looking more in-depth of what our buildings can actually hold, especially if we have a band room, a music room, an art room, space for special education, because initial reports will just give you just classrooms. Well, if you just do classrooms, that means arts on a cart, music's on a cart, and I know that's not what the community wants to see. Community wants to see, you know, the appropriate spaces. Um, so we, we have been through every building to identify spaces. Um, you know, some, some, each building has different spaces. Uh, we looked at not only our, our current enrollment, with we have seven sections seems to be our top number of sections, so we'd wanna plan for whatever configuration that we would have room for seven sections of students, so that we didn't get to a spot where we wouldn't have classroom space. So, in our current numbers, I have in, in the packet, the class sizes, the average between both buildings and the overall, uh, building and district average. Um, there's some discrepancies, uh, you know, but it's grade level by grade level, there's always discrepancies. The piece I found very interesting is I found an article in December where there was an issue at, um, at a Royal Oak Board meeting regarding class size, and this is some information that C and G Newspaper put together based upon the different districts. And it's just second grade, that's all, the only stat that they have, so it's the only stat I could go with in terms of comparison. But on comparison, our class size is significantly lower, which is great. Um, so they didn't have the other grades for me to do any sort of comparison with. But, so we can see that even though, yes, we had to raise some class sizes, we still have small class sizes compared to many, many of our, many of our other local districts. And I can just say even from my own experience in some other districts so far, they're in Oakland County, you know, they're talking upwards in the thirties, especially for later elementary and, you know, upwards to thirty-six, thirty-eight in high school classes, which we don't have anywhere near that. Uh, we're, you know, at the, at the top in the lower thirties. So, um, you know, as much as I don't think any district wants to increase class size, at least we're comparatively to our other districts, we're keeping within the same, same area or lower. So as we look at, so, the two different configurations, one would be a, you know, a two K five building in some way, and another one is a split between a K two three five. Looking at our current numbers and current classrooms, uh, the report just kinda goes through some initial ideas regarding classrooms, regarding buildings, what is possible. We did look with the bond funds, 'cause we do have some, a little more additional bond funds due to, um, due to interest that we've had in the bank, in our bank account. But we cannot use bond funds for building additions. I did get legal clarification on that, that the way our bond is written, uh, 'cause we did look at some possible, you know, small additions to building to help increase some class sizes or some classrooms, uh, but that is not allowable during the bond, during the bond. It's anything on the interior or exterior of the building, no additions can be done. Um, so it's something that we explored, but were advised by legal that was not possible. So, in looking at the different buildings, we know that our two newest buildings, JFK and Coolidge, are in our, our best shape. There is some more possible renovation with JFK to bring a couple more classrooms online and to utilize some space. JFK is also is one of our largest classroom size, same with Coolidge, has our largest classroom size. Um, I'm sorry, Taft is about the same size in terms of classroom square footage. There's a little bit of room in Taft to add some additional classrooms. Not that much in Wilson and not that much in, in Roosevelt. Uh, with Roosevelt, it would really be fire code issues in terms of the interior rooms not having sprinkler systems, so they cannot be used as teacher classrooms. They could be used per se music or art, but that would be the extent of it. So we have some possibilities. I think we have some more exploration that we need to do. And we wanna not just base it upon our current numbers, but you wanna use your current numbers as about eighty-five percent and then extrapolate from there, so that if you have a, you know, a big group that comes in one year, you have space for them in whatever building, whatever config, configuration it is. Uh, and I will get, um, shortly, within the next week, some numbers on some possible renovations, so that we would know what sort of budget money we're talking about to move a wall, to make a classroom bigger. Uh, or for some of the places, uh, new playground equipment, so playground equipment is, aids specific, uh, so that we don't have a building that we don't have a proper playground for, for students. Um, and there is playground money in, already allocated within the bond. Uh, so that, those are some of the pieces that we're exploring. It's not, not to a point where we could make any type of recommendation regarding buildings, uh, because I need to get some dollar figures attached to these, as well as continue to have Plant Moran look through the space to make sure that it can be used appropriately, uh, for some, especially for either a Wilson or a Taft that have not been elementary schools for a while. Um, I did not include Harding on this, just because it's not part of the overall elementary choices. But in terms of preschool, we have had Plant Moran go through, and there's really no work that needs to be done to this building since we already have preschool in it. Uh, you know, there'd be some exterior work that we, that we'd probably wanna do. But beyond that, you know, this, this building is pretty much all set for that, if, if that were per se the choice. Um, so there wouldn't be any additional costs in this building. So that's kind of where we're at at this point. And I did, did do some tours with some administrators, as well as with Elin Jameson for bands, so we can make sure whatever spaces in, in buildings, if they didn't have a band room, per se Taft or Wilson, where would be a space that would be appropriate? So we've identified some of those and then, as well as some of the issues with that. So that's kind of where we are with the facility side, and we're still working on it. Uh, it's, you know, something that we need to get some more information before we can do anything.
Alright, thank you. Any, um, questions or comment from the board?
Blake, can you just review for us the timeline as we, as we move forward with the restructuring process?
Sure. Um, tomorrow, we have superintendent's advisory where we're going through, the teachers are going through the three elementary models, uh, what they see from a teacher perspective. Um, I'll be going through some of the, the information that has been leading up to it, going a little more in-depth. Um, then we'll take the information from tomorrow, as well as from Plant Moran and MLI, uh, to, on the ninth, make some recommendations, um, at that point. And then, uh, from my aspect as superintendent, uh, there will not be just one recommendation. All three models will be included. We'll just include, based upon the strategic plan, you know, where are the strengths and the weaknesses? Um, where might be the areas that, that we say, yes, this, this is strong in this area, but it might be weak in this area. Because there's gonna be strengths and weaknesses with any model. So, uh, we'll be bringing that forward with all the programs and all the buildings on March ninth, not just elementary, with preschool, with all the, you know, possible buildings that, that may or may not be recommended to take offline and possible uses. So that'll be the ninth, and I know, I believe we have a study session on the twelfth for then the board to, um, talk through the information or request additional information or, you know, whatever, whatever else the board may need in its deliberation, its decision.
And included in that, in, on the calendar is also a, a study session scheduled with the board on the, what was that, Monday?
That was the twelfth. That's the study session on the twelfth, the Monday meeting on the sixteenth. It's a regular board meeting.
I'm referring to-
Oh, the, the, the second?
The second, which is the Monday before the ninth, um, which is something that has been scheduled now for the board to meet as a work session, to talk about specifically the topic of equity.
Correct, and I'm working on a facilitator for that at the moment.
Okay.
Um, do, do not have a facilitator for it yet, but.
Okay.
So it is, it is not to the models or the specifics, it's regarding strategic plan and equity, um, discussion of equity.
A common, reach, trying to reach some agreement on, a common definition of equity.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Good, thanks. Alright, any other, um, comments?
I did have some things I wanted to talk about regarding the restructuring process, especially regarding, um, the elementary restructuring. So I know that there's a lot of people here tonight, and that's what you're all here for, and I can appreciate that. And the first thing I wanna start off and say is that I know that this restructuring process can be scary. Um, most of you know out there that I have two elementary kids in the district, and in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, I'll still have two elementary kids, so this is affecting my family too. So I understand the feelings behind that. I really, I really do get it. Um, and I know I can speak for myself and I can speak for, I think, everyone at this table, is that we've been spending a tremendous amount of time thinking about this. Um, I know for myself, I have been spent hours and hours and days thinking about this restructuring process, um, thinking about what our various options are, thinking about the strategic plan that we put together as a community, thinking about the needs of all of our kids in this district, thinking about what our district needs to be successful moving forward, and thinking about the conversations that we had with the high school students on what they felt and what, what they feel about their elementary school experience in Ferndale. Um, and also thinking about the requests from our staff and our teachers, and thinking about the, the comments and questions and concerns and preferences from the parents in the district on what they want for their kids. So there is just so much that goes into this process, and there's gonna be so much that goes into the ultimate decision that we have to make, um, in a couple of weeks or less than a couple of months. Um, and it's almost like trying to fit a five-thousand-piece puzzle into a little tin. Yet there's just so much information, I'm in trying to sift through it and to share it. We're, we're working on that, but there are all these considerations, you know, regarding buildings, regarding budgets, regarding curriculum, data, research, history. There's all these things to think about. And there's, they're concrete things and they're very practical things, but the, at the heart of it, it are, they're our kids. That's what we're really talking about. Though, that is our main focus, and that's what we have to focus on. So we have all these practical considerations, but it's swirling around this emotion and this passion, which is the way it should be, because our kids are the most important. So what we're doing now is we're getting closer to the process, we're getting closer to, you know, to the end of gathering information, and we're moving now into the presenting of information, and we're getting close to the actual decision-making process. So understandably, as we're moving closer to that point, the conversations in the community in person and online are getting more frequent, and they're getting more prevalent, and they're getting a little bit more exuberant. So I appreciate that, and I wanna continue that. And as a part of my conversations, I've heard a lot about the future of open. So what I wanna talk about is that a lot of the conversations that I've heard and been a part of are very similar to the conversations that I saw in the media and I heard in my neighborhood that happened in two thousand two. And what I would like to do is see if we can reframe the question and say, really, what I would like to know from everyone is, what is it that you love, what is it you love about your school? What is it that you wanna see move forward? 'Cause I know, um, and I think that's really what Blake has done with his team when he's gone out to the PTA meetings, is to find out what people love and what they wanna see moving forward. 'Cause I know there's tremendous pride in open, and rightfully so. We know it's been working. There's no, we know there's pieces of it that have been absolutely fantastic, 'cause our kids are succeeding. Our kids, I can, I can see it in my third graders, that they have this, this love of learning, and they're forming these lifelong friendships that I hope continue, 'cause I adore their friends, and I, this, it's just part of our community. So they're going on, our kids from the open program have gone on to be successful in high school. They're going on to be successful in college, whatever path they choose. And it has, open has a very long history in Ferndale. I understand that. It's been around since the seventies, some, longer than some of the parents we have in our district. But when it was first established, I know that it was, someone posted it today, um, it was based on heightened parent involvement. It was focused on blended classes, and had project-based and student-led learning, student mentorship. It was cutting-edge for its time in the nineteen seventies, absolutely. But when we fast-forward to the last decade, um, I think we can all agree that our happy Ferndale bubble has been dealt with some significant blows and significant challenges. When we talk about external forces, we have the reduced state funding, we have the increased regulation from the state, we have the mandatory testing that we have to do, and we have the declining enrollment that we have to deal with. So we have those external forces, and then we had significant internal forces that we're dealing with still to this day. So I think we can all say, yes, we are clearly left with a community that's different today and expectations and influences that are very different today than we had in nineteen seventy. So I don't know if the right answer is to go back to how it used to be and recreate the past, but what I do know is that we can take those foundations that we know are successful with our kids and take those foundations and move them forward. We know parent involvement is important, and it's, it's crucial to our, our program. We know that project-based learning is working. We know that the outdoor education component is, is important. Now, all of those pieces are going to be involved in all the options that we have presented to us. None of those things are going away. The number-one thing I hear about open that people treasure is the parent involvement. Now, not only, all, all the options that we have coming down the pipeline, they're not, that's not going away. That's getting expanded, so I just wanna make that, put that out there. And I know firsthand, 'cause I see it every day and hear about it, how dedicated and how passionate our parent volunteers are. They work tirelessly with our group. We are a crazy, passionate group of people. That's, that defines Ferndale and our Ferndale school. And I'm thankful every day that we have that and that my kids have that. Even if we don't always agree on stuff, we agree that our kids are number one. So what I want you all to know tonight is that we're hearing you, I'm hearing you, I'm hearing the conversations. I'm hearing what you're talking about with the benefits of open and the incredible community that that creates for our kids. And I want you to know that I think that we can really take those positives and create a school district that's gonna provide those opportunities for all of our kids. And this is where equity is gonna come into play. And we're, as a board, talk about that a lot in the next coming, and then I, I think it's next week. But when I sat down with the high school kids a couple of weeks ago and asked them, and the questions were, what did you think, what did you think of your elementary school experience? I have to say, when they were talking about the lack of equity that they felt the students in Ferndale, and when they talked about the lack of diversity in their own experiences, I was absolutely appalled. Some of the things that I wrote down when I was there that I heard kids say was, "We should be together sooner so that we can build community." So the next thing that I heard that really struck me was a kid saying that they hated being the other. This wasn't our words. This is a words from the kids. They sat there and said, "I didn't like being the other." And the number-one thing that absolutely floored me, and I wrote it down verbatim, was a student that said, "I felt degraded, like we were the stupid kids. It was like if we didn't get into JFK, we were stuck at Roosevelt and Coolidge, and we didn't matter as much." No child should ever feel that way. We, as a community, can do so much better than that, and we, as a community, have to do better than that if we want our kids to survive and we want our schools to succeed. So what I'm asking for and what I'm looking forward to is hearing tomorrow what Blake and the teachers have to say. Um, I'm looking forward to the presentation that they are gonna put forward for us, because I know that if our teachers are behind the plan going forward, and if I know the parents are behind the plan going forward, our kids are gonna do amazing, amazing things. That's the kinda community that we are. So I wanna thank you all for coming today. I wanna thank the people that are gonna be watching this. I thank you for coming to the next session of meetings that we have going on. And I wanna thank Blake and his team. We asked you guys to do almost an impossible feat, to gather all this information and move forward. So I wanna say thank you for the work that you've done, for the time and the effort, and I'm looking forward to where it's going, even though it's not gonna be easy, but thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just wanna support what you said, Jen, and, um, I, I sketched out a few things. And I hesitate to even say anything to, to, uh, take, you know, that, I think any words might subtract from what you said. But I also just wanna, um, sort of paraphrase some of the things that I've heard parents say and, um, and then share a little bit about my thinking right now. Um, in addition to the very important things that teachers and administrators and the students have brought to us that we've heard. I've heard people, I've heard many people say that they like the open program, and, and I honor that, and I think, as Jen said, um, as we've heard feedback that the administrators have incorporated that. I've heard that, uh, I think everyone that I've heard from has said they want different learning styles accommodated, and that's been said in different, in different ways, but I think that's been a universal thing. I've heard that people really value volunteering and parental involvement. That, uh, people, that I've heard, also heard that people need to know that what we are, that what we're gonna propose uses what works in education, what works with, what can work with all students with those different learning styles. So many people want unity. They want equal access to programs. Many, if not all, people value the sense of community in their school and worry about losing that. And I, I understand that and I hear that. People wanna know more specifics, of course, um, and I think we'll be getting more specifics to them as this process unfolds with what all of the different options would look like. And as we move toward making a decision in, in mid-March, even when that, we'll be making a decision on a model, but there's going to be more work that needs to be done after that. So many people are concerned about retaining families, so keeping the families that we have in the school district. People are concerned about retaining families who, right now, are disillusioned about being treated as less than equal. People are worried about, um, what, what- People are worried about what, what may seem like small things, but really are big things. Little, you know, how are they going to get their little kids to two different schools if we go to a split-grade model? And so we need to, we need to work out those sorts of transportation and scheduling problems. People are worried about how hard the district is going to work to communicate and manage and sort of sell whatever change happens because something, you know, there will be some substantial change. And what I know from what I've seen from our teacher leaders and from our administrators is that as they've heard comments and feedbacks, they have worked hard to incorporate those into the evolving presentation that, that people will see tomorrow, that they will see over the next few weeks. And I honor and respect both the spirit with which the comments and feedback have been offered and the, the dedication and work that the teachers and administrators have put into incorporating that. So where I stand is respecting all of that feedback, but along with what I think was the spirit of that, of the comments and feedback, that I truly care about all kids' learning up to the fullest of their potential. I also care about treating people equally and equitably. And to me, that means being fair and inclusive. I care about building a better elementary program and that's something that we need, not just duplicating what's worked in the past, which should be honored and respected and we should use everything that we can out of our open classroom programs, our brain based programs and what we know about how that affects kids in middle school and high school. But we can do better with, with all of our programs. And just from what I've seen so far, I know that we will have better programs. We will have more opportunities. We'll be adding to Ferndale Elementary Education. And I believe in real teacher-empowered, student-centered education and I think that's also what we are going to see from all the options. I really want there to be one Ferndale community. However, that looks like, you know, it can be based on open principles and that's what we've been hearing again and again that it, that it will be and I believe that. And that's also going to mean incorporating the opportunities that other learning models present to us. So I just want to underscore that everyone who's sitting at all of the tables at the front of this room do, are listening and are working hard to incorporate what we're hearing to the best of our ability and we will continue to do that. And we are going to make the decisions in the end that are based on what's best for all of our kids, this community and, and everyone who lives and is a part, lives in it and is a part of it. So that's all I have to say.
I also have been doing a lot of listening lately and I think that the two of you have so eloquently captured so much of what I've been hearing and so much of what we've been thinking. I think one of the things that I would just like to piggyback on is a concern I've heard about what does equity mean to us on the board? And I have heard many comments to say that that's just code for black or white or that's code for schools of choice. Were it that simple, we wouldn't need to have an entire meeting on it on March 2nd. But I will say that to me, what that means is equal access to programs, policies that create equal opportunity, to make certain that we never have children that are feeling like they are the others. And I also hear a lot of concern that we have forgotten our residents. That couldn't be further from the truth. I live in Pleasant Ridge where it's very apparent to me every day when I go to the pool or whatever activities happen in Pleasant Ridge, how many of my neighbors aren't coming to this district and I want them back. And so on the other side of this, I know, just to your point, that we can't be talking just about closing buildings. We have to be talking about adding opportunities. We have to be coming out stronger and growing on the other side of this. And, you know, part of that, you know, when we talk about the Open program and what that's going to look like on the other side, I know that we've had so many conversations about how do we professionally develop our team? Because I've heard for all the years that my kids have been in the district, you know, my oldest is 15, I've heard a lot of concern about how, over the years, that program has become watered down, that people aren't trained in it, that they don't have the buy-in within the building. And so we're in an opportunity where we can provide that professional development, where we really can bring in the training on project-based learning. We can look at what does it mean to have those multi-age mentorships? What is student-centered learning? And many, many ways to amplify that community partnership and the parent involvement that comes into the classroom. And so the other thing that I think I'd really like to point out and remind people of is that this decision is not something that's being implemented next year. So as we talk about that process, we're not just looking at the dates leading up to, you know, study session on March 12th and a decision. We're not talking about just that. What we're looking at is a full year to listen, to refine, to plan and to really honor these concerns and get them right together. So I really, I hope that everybody will stay engaged because that's something that makes our community strong and we have a whole year after this to get it right. So that's, that's sort of the thoughts going through my mind.
Thank you, Karen.
I agree with everything that's been set up here. This has all been extremely, I, I think, difficult and hard on all of us who love and care for our community that we're part of. I definitely feel like I've just been in the listening phase right now and Jen touched on a great point when she said that we're moving from the listening phase. I've been looking all the time, what was the group that we brought to do the strategic plan thing? Well, anyways, we had to wear buttons to all the meetings that says, "I'm just here to listen." And one time I ended up, oh, it was your wife. It was the first time I met her. And I was actually in a conversation with her and whoever the guy was who was leading the thing was like, "You're only supposed to be listening." And I've really taken that to heart, that, that part of the process. Do you remember that?
I do not.
Charlie Cletum was very adamant that we listened and so we were trained to not...
But I, I, I really listened to that as being part of the process of when you are the decision-maker, there's a time for you to not be actively involved in the conversation because if you are, it messes up my intake of information. And so for me to be quiet and to just listen and to just read and to stay separate in doing it, although I think it's becoming apparent that doing that also has the other effect of making people, it looked like to people that we're maybe not processing with them. And that was definitely never my intent. I've been very engaged in listening and I, I love everything that Jen said, so I'm, I'm, and what Karen said, this is kind of exciting. I know it's super scary, but like we have a ton of research and data at our disposal and can make our elementary schools, they're already great, now we can make them even more awesome. I have a preschooler and every time we talk about any of this, I think, oh my gosh, this is so exciting that Sage is going to benefit from all these conversations and from being a part of this community, which I believe in.
In fact, didn't we sit down and make certain that our kids, somebody within the board has a kid who will be encountering each of those transition points at the time that this occurs? And so, I mean, we've got skin in this game.
That's just kind of what I was going to point out, Karen, that we all, all of the parents at this table, we all have children that will be affected by this, so, and, and you know, not only will your children be affected, ours will too, so we are not taking this lightly and I just wanted you guys to know that. We're really thinking about it hard.
You're looking at me like you're, you're the only one who hasn't spoken. Are you saying you always like to speak? Well, I, I will say that I didn't know that we were going to be doing this tonight, so I'm not at all prepared, but I, I am feeling very much like there has been a lot sacrificed at this table. The people here at this table are all parents, but the work that we're doing on this particular part of our school board roles goes so much farther than just our kids. And I, none of us had to do this. We, we could have just sat back and just been parents and just, I could have just focused on my own three daughters. Everyone could have just focused on their own family. And we raised our hands and we said, you know what, we're going to try to work for the greater good, try to forward our community. And it is, I think, one of the hardest things I've personally ever had to do. And I have been extremely disappointed by some of the process and some of the conversations and it's, and it's really, really depressing. And I, I am an optimistic person. Those people in the room who know me, you know that I am an optimistic person, but this has been extremely hard. And I just want to thank my fellow board members for the sacrifice that you're making. I feel that in the end, our kids are all going to benefit and all of the kids of the district, all of those UHS kids who, you know, that, that's, some people don't even know that we have a UHS in our district. You know, we have to think about them too. Would I like to just be at home, just working on my own little nuclear family, my, my three girls, you know, that would be great. I would love to, to be able to do that. But I do know that my three girls are going to be fine. And, but it's some of the other kids in the district that I do, we do have to be thinking about and, you know, it is, it is a sacrifice that we are making and it's really hard. And I, I remain optimistic, but it has been very difficult.
I first want to thank the board for all that you are. As volunteers, I think of all the time that you spend that I know other boards do not. And I've worked with other boards that would not take any of this time. And I will say, I, I knew coming in as superintendent that there was a strategic plan in place and there was a call for a reconfiguration or reconstruction of the district. It is the last thing in the world a new superintendent wants to do and I know it's the last thing in the world a board wants to do or a community. It is easier, easier to sit back and just let things ride. But then you have to deal with the long-term consequences of when you let that ride. So I think all of us, and this goes for administration included, it would, it would make all our lives so much easier to not take any of this on. But we take it on for the kids. When I walk into the kindergarten classroom, I look at the kindergartner and I go, whatever we decide, whatever the board decides and whatever we put in place, I want that kindergartner to have all the benefits that the current 12th grader has. And what I see in this, regardless of whatever model eventually comes out of this, we will have gains. We will gain in the district. We will gain in education. And, and I believe that what the teachers are working on, what the teams have worked on, any, any one of those, we will be able to get educational gains for students. And not only will we have what, you know, what we know is, is good now, but we will have better and better for our community. So that 10 years from now, we can look back and say how great this education has been moving forward. That is my focus, is those kids and making sure that we honor the traditions and the, the pieces are important to this district. Why being able to go, how do we, how do we make sure the things of the past that we know are not good, that we start to move the needle on that and start to solve that so no kid feels like they're not wanted? Because every parent, every, every parent, every morning has her kid leave their door and loves that child and wants the best education for that child. No parent says, you know what, I hope you get a lousy education day and I don't love you. Well, maybe my house, but beyond that. No parent says that. And I know that as a community, we believe that and we support our parents and we see that in our community. And I know that regardless of, of whatever decision is made, we will move that bar forward for all kids. So I just want to thank the board and thank the community for their interaction and for the community stepping forward on the strategic plan and saying what they want for a district. Many communities do not have that vision. Many communities do not come out for meetings and to talk about what they want. That's a sign of a strong community that we need to continue to foster.
Thank you.
So after that, we're going to turn the page on the agenda and move to item 7.2, which is Rochelle and an update on the Cambridge site visit for the middle school.
So this year, the instruction department, along with the administrators, instructional lead teachers and the work of Ferndale Middle School staff, Dawn Warren, and especially my left brain, Beth Grillo, she's not here tonight. We have moved forward with submitting an application to become a Cambridge school site. And we submitted that application in December of 2014. Today, a Cambridge representative came to our district and spent the entire day at Ferndale Middle School. Mr. Shelton was there along with Beth Grillo and Dawn Warren and her staff. He was ecstatic. I can't go into details about everything he said, but he walked away ecstatic at the stuff he saw our students doing, our teachers doing and our staff doing. He was blown away with what quality education we have in our Ferndale Middle School. To prepare for the site visit, we had to get a lot of different policies, health and safety policies, our student code of conduct, different language policies. We have to show a very timeline or very organized professional development plan on how we would move forward with learning about the Cambridge Honors curriculum at the middle school. We had to show staff resumes, roles and responsibilities, starting from Mr. Pruitt all the way down to everyone in our school district and just a very specific school development plan. After today's visit, Mr. Pruitt should be receiving a phone call very shortly with some information about how we will be moving forward as a Cambridge Honors Ferndale Middle School program. So once we hear from him and his recommendation, and I know it's going to be very positive, we will begin in April having professional development with the Cambridge curriculum, looking at a summer training timeline and then how we would begin to our honors program for English and Language Arts, Science and Math in September of 2015. So keep your fingers crossed, but we know that today's visit went extremely well and again, thanks to Dawn and her staff and Beth Grillo for all of their hard work.
Right. Yes, please extend our thanks to them also. Outstanding. Item 7.3 is a HR report, update on teacher evaluation with Mr. Shelton.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mays, for getting me lined up over there.
You're welcome.
Hope my clicker works now. So I wanted to come before you tonight just to present some information for you. The, the agenda specifically says teacher evaluations and that definitely will be the focus of my presentation tonight and I promise it will be a brief one. However, I do want to touch on some of the other employee evaluations in the district as well because I think it's important to talk, to talk about them as one issue. Coming in, in my first year in Ferndale, looking at employee evaluations was probably my biggest charge and my top priority. my biggest charge and my top priority. And, you know, just an anecdote to explain why this was so important to tackle so early. When I sat down with a staff member several weeks ago to talk about her evaluation for the year, she informed me that it had been eight years since she'd been evaluated, and that was the time when she was told to write her own evaluation. So there is, and obviously the issues are different by employee group, but the, really across the board, the district was really ripe for some changes and for some improvements in how we're gonna conduct employee evaluations. So just briefly, want to talk about why we evaluate. Obviously, we've been really careful as we've talked with our different employee groups to emphasize the fact that evaluation should be a process, not an event. I remember as a first-year teacher, my evaluation consisted of one day when my principal called me into her office and put a piece of paper in front of me, and that was it, and that was evaluation. We're really developing a process that is a year-long process from beginning to end, where that dialogue between the evaluator and the employee is the most important part of it. We know that through that dialogue and discussion, our goal is not to come to a rating at the end, but our goal is ultimately to help that employee perform better to their fullest potential. Sometimes when you're talking about evaluation, you're talking about helping a poor employee become good. More often than not, especially in a district like ours, the focus in our evaluation discussions are helping good employees become even better. So that is definitely a focus of the systems that we're developing. We also believe that everybody in our organization, from, to a person, deserves the opportunity to first, understand what expectations are, and second, to live up to them. And that's definitely a part of the process we've put together. And obviously, this is all built around the fact that our students in our community deserve the best from our employees. So just wanted to briefly touch on some of those guiding principles that we've tried to focus ourselves on as we move forward. So the next two slides, I want to talk about what's new and what's not. There are several items that are new, and those are the three evaluation tools that are listed up there. Our administrators, including our AFSA, which are our building administrators, as well as our central office administrators, are using a new tool called School Advance. This is one of these self-state endorsed models. It's also the model that the superintendent's being evaluated on, that I know some of you on the board have had some exposure to, if not all of you. And our building administrators are going through a process that's very similar to what you are going through with the superintendent. It's very similar to the teacher model as well, where it's broken up into multiple domains, and each domain has different components. There's a strong component of that that is student growth data and showing achievement of goals. So again, the process that our administrators are going through now is very, very similar to what our teachers are going through. And we just had a team of administrators from the district go through a two-day training yesterday and today. Blake and Dino were there. We had three other building, I believe, three other building principals as well who were there, getting some intensive training on the tools. So we're really optimistic about that. The focus on the rest of my slides is really on the teacher evaluation. Just want to expose you to that and give you a chance to answer, ask questions about that. Our teachers are being evaluated using a program called TeachScape. And TeachScape works really closely with Danielson. It's really important that you as a board, as well as us, understand the difference between TeachScape and Danielson. TeachScape is the delivery model. TeachScape is the vendor that gives us Danielson. Danielson is the actual rubric, the actual evaluation model. TeachScape is the system that we use to access Danielson, if that makes sense. Charlotte Danielson is a nationally known researcher who's just spent basically her whole career studying in what consists of effective teaching and what exactly is effective teaching. So the rubrics that are used are developed out of Danielson's research. TeachScape is the online system that we use for administrators and our teachers to conduct the evaluations. And I'll talk in a couple slides about exactly how our rollout for that has gone. The last point that I want to make is that we do have kind of a leftover group in the district, and that is what we call our exempt employees. Those are the employees who aren't represented by an employee group. And those employees have not traditionally had an evaluation tool. It's been kind of piecemeal. So one of the things that I've done this year is put together a locally developed tool for us to use with those employees, and we'll be implementing that this year. There's also a lot of things that aren't new. For administrators and teachers, they've always had to give data for student growth. We've not made one change to that process. Just the teachers, the way that they are gonna submit their growth data and what they have to submit is exactly the same this year as it has been in years past. The feeling was just that we're changing enough with the teachers' evaluation, that that was one piece that we could leave intact, because it really was decent the way that that was done before. Our evaluation tools for our secretaries, for our paras, for basically our entire ASME group, our transportation, custodian, maintenance, we didn't touch at all. Those are all identical to what they were in years past, again, because they were already pretty good. There was no urgent need to touch those in this first year. I've already touched on really all of that, so I'm gonna skip over that slide and that one and address timelines real quickly. Our timeline is really different by employee groups, so I'll kind of go do them all together. By April 1st, all of our administrators will have their classroom observations complete. Every teacher will have two, a minimum of two classroom observations in the course of the school year. One announced and one unannounced. By April 1st, all those are done, and teachers also, that's also the deadline for teachers to give what we call artifacts. Those are their supplemental things that they want their administrators to be able to see in order to complete their evaluation. One of the beauties of TeachScape is that it's an online system, and it allows for kind of a virtual back and forth between teachers and administrators, and it allows for the storage of those materials. So if, for example, before a classroom observation, teacher can submit their lesson plan through the system, and it's accessible and visible on both sides of the TeachScape system, to the administrators and the teachers. Administrators have the month of April to complete their teacher evaluations. The final evaluation is a pretty intense, involved document, so that's why we have to have the April 1st deadline for all the materials to be submitted and the observations complete, so that administrators have that month to complete all their evaluations. And by May 1st, all those teacher evaluations have to be due. Most of the rest of our employee groups have a May 15th deadline for the evaluation instruments, and tentatively June 1st, our administrator exempt evaluations will be due. By, and I don't know the exact date, I believe June 12th or June 15th, we have to submit what's called the rep report to the state that includes our final evaluation scores for all of our employees. So that's why we have to have everything done by June 1st, so that we can get that rep report done and submitted in time. So just one more point that I wanted to make, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We've really worked hard to try to provide as much support as we can to teachers as we go through this first year and this process that's really quite different from what we've done before. The TeachScape system does a great job with some online tutorials that are available for teachers on their website, and I've made that kind of known to them and available to them. I've been in each building across the district multiple times, presenting to them, talking to them about the system. Most recently, I've been doing open labs in different buildings just for teachers to drop in and get some help or support. Coming up on this coming Friday, I'm gonna spend the entire day at the high school, middle school campus in one of their computer labs for teachers to drop in during their prep time for assistance, questions, anything that they have. There's a professional development day on March 13th, I believe, that I'll be doing two different presentations on for teachers who need help. And the most encouraging thing to me is I've noticed recently, over the last couple weeks, that as more and more teachers develop a comfort level with the system themselves, I see more teacher leadership and more teachers standing up and helping each other. And I think that can only improve and grow over time. So it's a lot of information at once, but I wanted to give you an overview of where we're at and give you a chance to ask any questions.
All right, thanks. And I know it's a lot of information, but reflects even more work, you know, the whole, your whole tenure here.
Yep, thank you. Yeah.
Hi, Austin. So how are the principals responding to this system? I mean, has it been, I mean, April 1st, it's like, you know.
Yeah, I think the principals would tell you they're pretty overwhelmed at this point, because it is a lot coming up at once. And one of the things I didn't mention that I believe all of you know, but I should mention because there's an audience in the room, is our principals had to go through a process of over 30 hours of really intensive training.
And that was early?
That was in the first semester of the school year, yeah. Part of it was face-to-face, part of it was online, and at the end of that, they had to pass a test. They had to pass a test that within a certain small percentage window, their scores matched all the other scores of the other administrators and what they call the expert scores. So one of the things that was maybe missing in the past, because we had a locally developed tool, was that inter-rater reliability and the fact that, you know, an effective rating from Administrator X at Ferndale High School really was comparable to an effective rating from Administrator Y at Roosevelt Elementary, so.
So next year, will we have the?
I think it'll be a little bit easier for the administrators next year. And I felt that myself as a building principal. The first year we went through this, it was tough, but the second year, there was much more of a comfort level, and it was much easier.
Right.
I have a couple logistical questions. Are teachers able to work on this from home?
Yes, it's web-based.
And it's secure?
Yes.
And there's no, you know, concerns about privacy or?
No. One of the nice things about TeachScape is it's really, it's a national, I mean, they're in states all across the nation. They have a huge tech department, and they provide a significant reassurance for us that it's, that the data there is secure. Secure in the sense that it can't be accessed or that it was, that it couldn't be tampered with, but also secure in the sense that that data is there for us to use and years down the road when we need to refer back to it.
And a few slides before, you talked about student growth, the student growth part of the evaluation.
Yes.
What, can you tell me more about that?
Sure. That is unchanged from what was done in the district in the past. Again, trying to preserve as much as possible, and that was decent. Of the 25 points that are assigned to student growth, first of all, I should say student growth is 25% of the total evaluation score. So 75% of the evaluation score is what they call teacher performance, based on, you know, what the administrative scores. So that's 75%, 25% of student growth. Of the 25 points for student growth, 18 of the points are based on the data that the teacher provides and the teacher brings in him or herself. So that 18 of the 25 is really developed in discussion between the teacher and the administrator. How do you show student growth? What measures do you have to show student growth and a year's worth of growth? The other seven points of that 25 is a building-specific score. We give each building in the district a score based on their accountability grades over the last three years, and that's pretty much a state mandate. That comes out of language the state's given us for how we're supposed to do that.
And so that, the information that this, that the teacher uses for that 18 points or whatever it is, is agreed upon between the teacher and the principal ahead of time?
Yes, yes.
And can they, our NWEA data, is that something that they can use?
So the information that has been shared with the administrators and will go out to teachers is that if they have NWE, NWE, excuse me, NWEA data, they do need to provide it. And other measures are, again, up to that discussion between the administrator and the teacher.
And this is more of a larger question about teacher evaluation in general. How much are external factors taken into effect, into account, when we're talking about student growth?
So student growth in general is very frustrating to teachers, and the reason that student growth is, one of the reasons student growth is very frustrating to teachers is the way that it's been developed by the state and the way it's been implemented by both districts is very vague. It's very, there's not a lot of black and white, it's a whole lot of gray. And that's done intentionally, because every situation is different and every kid is different.
Right.
So it's definitely not a, if you don't have 90% of your students show growth from point A to point B, then you're gonna be minimally effective. It's not that way at all. It's incumbent on the teacher, together with the administrator, to present the data and to tell the story that the data tells.
So they have to make the case?
Mm-hmm. And if a student-
And they have anything at their disposal to make that case?
And if a student or a group of students have not shown significant growth, they have the opportunity, again, through what they submit to the administrator, to document, here's the interventions that we've tried. Here, here's the growth that the student did show that's maybe not necessarily represented in this specific set of data.
And when you talk about how the teachers are sort of helping each other out with some of the technology part of it, is, are they also available to share with each other ideas about how to make that case? You know, to set each other up for success?
You know, again, the data piece is not new this year. It's from-
Right, I know. I'm playing catch-up here.
I understand. It's from past years. I think one of the biggest assets that we have as a district for teachers are the early release Data Mondays in the PLCs.
Okay, right.
And those data teams that meet on Monday really are focused around their achievement data and how their students are showing growth and developing those data binders that bring in multiple measures that show student growth. So the early release Data Team Mondays are the biggest item that I point out in terms of teachers collaborating and working together.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Shelton.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is a finance report, Ms. Hoover. We in finance are used to this, so. Yeah, we always go after the exciting program stuff.
Governor Schneider's budget proposal?
Oh, wow, there is that.
Yeah.
Are you implying that her report is not gonna be exciting?
Well, because it relates to the government, the part about the government.
Maybe she could present it in song.
Yeah, where's the telegram? Could she bring her autograph?
Nancy's totally blocking us out.
I know, she's not appreciating all of it.
Good for her.
Right. Anything with Schneider's, it just tells me about him to be good.
She doesn't use her tiny notes.
She's sabotaging me.
I don't know why you couldn't laugh.
Finance is so exciting.
It is. That's why everyone stays. So early this month, the governor submitted his budget proposal.
Yeah, I mean, it's too low.
Oh.
Just let me know when you're ready.
Okay. And so I can just basically just go through a few of the highlights of his proposal. The first major thing is that he has proposed, in addition to the foundation allowance of $75, this will be to all districts. And as you can see, the minimum foundation right now is a little over $7,200. And so for those districts at that level, it'll increase them to a little over $7,300, which is about a 1.03 increase to our foundation. And you can see the max, it's about .93. We as Ferndale are a little, are somewhere in the middle at about a .96 increase to our foundation. So that'll put us at $7,883 for next year. Go ahead. There will be an increase to at-risk funding. This is gonna amount to about $118 per student for Ferndale. There hasn't been an increase in this category of goals since 2002, so this is really a big deal. They're looking for this to be used to work on proficiency in reading through grade three, as well as getting our high school students' career and college ready. Well, this is really great funding for our district. It's something we really can use and can help our students. It's important to remember that it can't be used for the programs that we currently have. This will be additional program that we will do to help our at-risk students. So we can't use it to pay for the teachers that we currently employ to run the programs that we currently have. The $75 can be used to that, but the $118 cannot.
Would we be able to use it for some of the professional development and things that we're planning on doing but haven't done yet, like Cambridge or, you know, that may be something just to talk- Like Cambridge or, you know, that may be something just to talk about in the budget.
It depends on how they structure and the requirements for this. That's really, we can use Title II A funding for a lot of our professional development towards our new programming. But this, the at-risk money really focuses on those students that are deemed to be at-risk.
Okay.
So. They're going to continue the MIPSER's UAL funding. Right now, this year, we have two pieces. They have the continuing piece where they're helping to keep the retirement rate flat. They also have the one-time funding, although there has been an issue with the one-time funding this year, and they basically gave us one payment in November and then they've stopped. And they're having a little disagreement, what exactly they're doing with that, and some, they think they need to go to the library retirement, and they're not really sure. So now, we're not sure if that funding is going to continue throughout the year, so everyone's kind of on hold and just waiting. But again, that's pass-through money. So if they do decide to take it away, you'll just see an adjustment in our budget, both in the expenditure side and the revenue side, and so it won't have an effect on our bottom line. But they are going to continue this funding. Go ahead to the next slide. And this is a little hard to read. This is the report that we get from the retirement system every year, showing us all the rates that we get to charge for all our employees, depending on which program they're in. There's a line at the bottom that shows our UAL percentage is going to be about ten and a half percent. We're at just under eight percent this year that they're giving us. Again, that's flow-through, that's pass-through money, but we're going to be up to about ten and a half percent next year, and that percentage is based on last year's payroll. So again, they'll just send us that money and we'll turn around and send it back, and that is to keep the retirement rate. Currently, it's about twenty-five point seven eight at the highest percentage. That's the highest retirement rate. As new employees come into the district, they're at lower rates, and over time, that rate will go down.
So in other words, if they didn't do the, the extra pass-through payment, they, they could, and this is, I think, what the governor has argued, they could just be charging instead of twenty-nine, twenty-seven percent, that extra eight or ten percent on top of that, so we could be paying.
Yes, our required...
Just forty percent of...
Yes, that's what he said, that our required payment would be well over thirty percent that we were paying until retirement. Okay, go ahead. Performance, twenty-two J performance funding, this is maintained this year at the two thousand fourteen level. This is not something that Ferndale has qualified for in the past, but they're eliminating it for next year. So, while this will affect some of our neighbors greatly, there's up to a hundred dollars per student in this. We will not be affected by this, so it's kind of good and bad at the same time, unfortunately. Okay. The best practices, once again, is changing. Not only, they are reducing the amount of funding from fifty dollars a student to thirty, to twenty dollars a student, so it will be a reduction of thirty dollars. But they have changed the criteria. There's two different sets of criteria. There's the financial criteria where we have to meet two of three of these. We already meet the first one, but the next two criteria are new, and they're both involving fund balance. And right now, we meet the one because we are above a five percent fund balance. And the other criteria is if we do fall below five percent, that the board will receive education on fund balance and maintaining of fund balance. So that's, go ahead. The second set is our academic, and these are all new. So we will have to work to make sure, to receive this funding, that we can meet two of the three. Okay, go ahead, Tom. Is that it? Oh, that's it. So basically, what this means for Ferndale is that we're going to see in total about a hundred and sixty-three dollar increase per student. But again, a hundred and eighteen of those dollars are at-risk funding. So while we'll get a seventy-five dollar increase to our foundation, we will lose thirty dollars for best practices. So we're looking at about a forty-five dollar per student increase. And then our MIPSER's money will increase by about a hundred and ninety-six dollars a student, so it's going to be a substantial amount of money that we're getting and then passing through. When the governor put out his proposal, he also issued an executive order, and basically, this was to fill holes in the current year budget. And when they typically do that, they go looking at the school aid fund, which actually was doing very well and had a fund balance. What the supplemental bill is going to do, it's going to reduce the general fund transfer to the school aid fund, and it's going to increase the amount that the school aid fund is covering community college funding and ads cost for the university MIPSER's UAL and the library MIPSER's UAL. And this is going to reduce our K-12 funding in the school aid fund in the current year by about two hundred and fifty-one million dollars. And so that's going to greatly reduce the fund balance, and then the projected fund balance for sixteen, seventeen, again, is very low and it's almost gone. So...
The, the UAL is the unaccrued liability for the pension system.
Yes.
So it's the, it's the difference between what the state actuaries expect to have to pay out to all current retirees and future pension system participants and what's in the system right now, and go, what's going, the actuarial value of what's in the system right now.
Yes.
So why they're having to pay all these makeup, this makeup amount is because for years, the state underfunded the pension system.
Yes. And the holes in the general fund, the state general fund are, have been created from massive tax credits that are now coming to fruition, and they're unable to pay.
So they shift whatever spending they can into the school aid fund to solve tax credit problems outside the school aid fund?
So that, do they have to have their own training to maintain a fund balance, like we'll have to have? One would think.
Will our training involve just rating whatever fund we deem to have too much money in it? I can pick out which school districts have a high fund equity, we're just going to take from them. Because that's the way the state does it. So I assume that that's how they train us.
Yes.
Get your ski masks.
So, I was just with Steve Norton and some other educational leaders on Sunday, and for those of you who don't know who Steve Norton is, he's the one who runs Michigan Parents for Schools website and who does a lot of rate analysis. I know that you probably worked with him when you were in Ann Arbor. So, he was sitting down with a lot of the numbers for the governor's proposed budget, and on the surface, it kind of sounds okay because, you know, we're giving more money to the at-risk programs, we're creating more categoricals, which is always fun for you and your department, right? But then, as he started to really go through and do the analysis, because of the impact on the twenty-J hold harmless type of districts and the best practices, what he found as he went through is that many public school districts were losing hundreds of dollars, and yet disproportionately, and I'm sure you're going to be so surprised, charters were gaining a lot of money. And in fact, I know this is going to be shocking to you, but one charter school is getting six hundred and eighty-dollar per pupil bump. A six hundred and eighty per pupil bump while other school districts are losing a lot of money. And it doesn't always play out. We think about what was Michigan looking like in nineteen ninety-four versus what is it looking like now? And so you have districts like Dearborn, hold harmless district, but they have a lot of at-risk students. The amount of money that they are going to lose is going to really cripple their district. So I can't guarantee they will be able to steal money from any district's fund balance because I think it's already going to be stolen anyway. So, that's, that's a little concerning. And then also, I want to point out that third grade portion of the budget, because what he's really doing is he's laying the foundation for a third grade retention bill. And we know that that miracle in Florida wasn't really a miracle, and when it did happen there, it did have more funding and things. So we really have to keep our eyes on that. And then it also brings us to this road bill that's coming up in not so long, and so there's a lot of good and bad on it, and I, I can't really say that it was great practice from our legislators, but one thing it would do is that it does guarantee that money cannot be taken for higher ed anymore. It doesn't secure the community college, but it would lock down some of the higher ed. And if you look at the school aid fund, that is much of what's been happening is that we've been trying to find out what other things we can take out of that money. So the libraries, the higher ed, and the community colleges. It used to be safe for just the K-12, and it's no longer so. So, supporting that road bill would be one way to start to secure that school aid fund, so just putting on some of that.
It's as long as we're, you know, they've talked about that more money would come to schools, but I don't think that's really something that you can look at. While it might do one thing and help secure our school aid fund, it really doesn't look like it will generate an increase in the foundation.
There's no specific promises.
Yes. So that's not, that's not something that we can rely on.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Nancy. We had no pulled consent agenda items, so we can move to ego points of pride. Who wants to start? Raylan, you sort of raised both hands, so I'll start with you.
Well, I guess my point of pride tonight will be, for my fellow colleagues, because I don't know if you all know this, but there are always people who have to go to the all-attend Saturday seminars or seminars during the evenings, and really take a lot of time to help the superintendent move this district forward. And I just want to let you all know that I appreciate you and all the time that you give. I know it can be taxing sometimes, but we know it's all worth, well, I'll speak for me, it's all worth it. And I just want to let you all know how I feel and that I appreciate you, so, thank you.
Do you have a point of pride?
You know what, I do have a point of pride. My point of pride is actually about secretaries. They're super, a hu- huge part of my children's life and a huge part of my everyday occurrence, whether I'm coming in here to Harding to deal with something or whether I'm going in to Roosevelt. I've been really, really lucky. For instance, yesterday, actually today, so we're starting the Coolidge Town Show, which you'll all be hearing a lot about over the next two months, and our first practice is on Thursday. Kids know that. However, twenty kids stayed after school today thinking that practice rehearsal was today. And I didn't even know about this until later because Jean just got them something to do, got them set up, and then the late bus came and got them later. She just, because she knows these, because she was like, it was fine, it's no problem, and of course, it wasn't fine. This is like something us parents decided to do, and then she ended up with it, and she made it work, and it's, I'm just, we have some amazing secretaries, so that's my point of pride, so. Well, secretaries in the audience, sorry.
I do have one. I just, our kids in our district are always doing something amazing, and there's always a group of kids that are doing something to give back to the community. And one thing I was following a little bit on Facebook and at school is there's a group of girls at JFK called the Shooting Stars. It's like this rogue brownie Girl Scout, they're doing their own thing because they're cooler. And they did, before the break, they did a food drive on their own, and they gathered more than six hundred food items to donate to Gleaners. So I think that this group of little kids, they had like a competition down the hallways, and whoever gathered the most food items per hallway, I think they get to throw a pie at Mr. Adams. So it was some pretty cool incentive that these kids came up with, and I'm just impressed with, with their, their, they're wanting to do something fun and want to do something together, setting up this rogue group and then doing something great for, for Gleaners, so just a shout-out to those, those kids.
You go off to building the pie-throwing to restructuring. Like everybody who's not happy can throw a pie at Mr. Adams.
Yeah, he's a good sport.
Don't tell us. Just kidding. My point of pride is somebody who is here tonight, who didn't know I was going to say anything, but Kim Shepherd. Kim is the executive assistant to the superintendent and the Board of Education, and generally, people who are calling or contacting the superintendent and the board are not always calling to say how happy they are about things. But I have never heard anybody say that Kim is not pleasant and happy to deal, you know, happy to see them, and she just brings so much life to this building and to what we do and keeps us organized and prepared, so, thank you, Kim. You mean she's happy to see you?
She's always happy to see me.
I have two points of pride. I think my first point of pride is like, well, many people don't know and he would never tell you, is that he is constantly, constantly at work for our district. The emails we get over the weekend, late at night, he never stops. And text messages, constant communication, constant dedication to our district, and I know that his cabinet is equally dedicated. And so, while it is a tough time, I want you to know how much I appreciate that and how much I appreciate your families, because I know that you haven't seen them much, and I really, really sincerely thank your families. I think my other point of pride is actually this community, and I actually love how boisterous everybody is. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but I've actually been pretty vocal and active lately, trying to save democracy in our schools. It may seem like just a given that we have school boards and, and the ability to have these democratic discussions, but it's not a given in all communities, and it's something that's under attack. And so, I am truly, truly grateful for you and the opportunity to have that. And so I think that it really is something that enriches us and it's something that informs me every day as I sit up here, and I'm, I'm very grateful for you.
I want to just tell a story about my daughter Ruth, who's a freshman in, at Ferndale High School, and she is in Ms. Rulo's language arts class, and they are working on a project, which is, I know it has a name, but I don't remember, but it, it, it's a sort of an open-ended project. The kids get to do whatever they want, really, and so a lot of them are, are going the route of, of online platforms. And so she, they all, I think all of them have to create a blog as part of this project. So, she was saying to me yesterday, she said, she declared to their whole, whole family, "Feel free to comment on my blog at, at any point." You know, she was encouraging all of us to comment. And of course, she's got her phone in her hand always, and she, she notices on her blog on the phone, "Oh, I have a comment. Mom, did you comment?" And I said, "No, I didn't comment. You just told me to like five minutes ago, I haven't commented yet." Well, I'm so glad you're still here, Tom, because it was Mrs. Mays who had commented on her blog. This is Ms. Rulo's class that she's doing the blog for. Mrs. Mays is her science teacher. That is my point of pride. Mrs. Mays is going above and beyond, you know, her, her, her student in her science class, she's looking at what her, her science class student is doing in her English class, and she commented on it, and she, you know, she gave Ruth a, you know, some questions and some feedback. And I just thought, you know, that is just a classic example of what happens all the time in our district, and I was, you know, so excited about that. And Ruth was thrilled, she's like, "Mrs., Mrs. Mays commented," you know, she was very excited. So she's going to hate that I'm talking about this now, but, it's okay.
I'm telling you, I have her blog right now.
Yeah, okay.
We should all tell her.
I will send it to you all right now.
Oh, and gee, your mom talked about you at the board meeting.
It's going to be on Twitter, yeah.
It's so funny, I got an Instagram from her recently, telling me to follow her on the food blog.
Yes, that's part of this project, it's, it's, that is the, the project.
I was very impressed with it. Follow me on my food blog, I was like, I will.
Yeah. She'll love it.
So, last week, even though it was, it was break, we offered teachers to come in and to help some with the elementary restructuring, and we had a, a number of teachers that took some of their time to come and help the district and help kind of foster where, where we're going to move forward. going to move forward. You know, I, I needed something in, in the band world. I wanted to, to look through some buildings and send a text to Elin Jameson. He goes, "Oh, sure, I'll meet you up at the buildings." Just our teachers and, and even when they're on their break, the ability to, to want to, to help the kids and want to be able to move things forward. You know, and Allison and the group that went out to California, I mean, these are all things that, that our teachers do, you know, to give back to the district and give back to our kids. And our teachers make our district, and our, our staff makes our district. You know, we're a district of people, we're in a people business. So, just very, continue to be very impressed with the people that we work with here. All right. I know Tom had, had one point of pride.
That was me. I'm sorry.
We just got the blog.
I just texted their blog, the blog to all of them. I'm sorry.
So, I know that those at the kids' table don't usually do the points of pride, but I believe that those do at the adults' table. But I asked Blake if I could tonight, and you'll remember that two weeks ago tonight, I, I was presenting to you all on some custodial issues and some concerns about the way that our buildings looked. I had the opportunity on Friday afternoon, and again this morning, to walk some buildings with some different people. And I want to share with you that I was very, very impressed with the level of cleanliness and the attention to detail in the buildings that I walked through, both Friday afternoon and this morning. And that was this building at Harding, that was the high school campus, Roosevelt and Kennedy. I saw clean floors, I saw big projects being taken on, and I saw staff showing pride in their work. So, I know sometimes we don't always get the chance to highlight some of the positives, and there's a lot of people that really worked hard last week to make our buildings shine and make them look good. So, you know, Sherry here at Harding, Don Gerard, and Hubert at the high school, I probably shouldn't have started naming names because there's no way I can get them all, but want to highlight our custodians for the hard work they put in last week in our buildings in shape.
All right. Thank you. Well, Deena, if you want to say something.
You're not at the kids' table.
And Kim and Nancy, too. Anybody?
Hey, point of pride!
I, I think we're good.
All right. She just looked like, that was actually her looking forward to me saying the meetings.
My point of pride is waiting for me at home right now.
All right. So, with that in mind, our next regular meeting is on March sixteenth, but we will have a study session following the governance committee meeting on March second. We will have a community forum on March ninth at the high school auditorium. We will have a study session on restructuring on March twelfth here. And of course, there probably will be a quorum of the board at the superintendent's advisory meeting tomorrow evening at the high school. Media center or auditorium?
Media center, I believe.
Media center. All right. So, I think with that, without objection.
I will be celebrating Chinese New Year in my district and trying to make it, so I'm not enough.